Have a quorum now. And I'm sure he'll be here any minute, so.
Great.
We can get, we can get moving.
Okay, everybody's in now.
All right. So let's start the meeting. We have a quorum of board members here. There are three members. And a fourth one should turn up at any moment. I'm Chair Eric Worth and the other board members. Are Heath Salit and Laura Bozzi. John Martin may, may show up soon. I just want to say first to correct one item on the agenda, well, actually two, two corrections. First, item three interviewing a candidate for a board seat that will be conducted by executive session. Or not as part of the open meeting. And the other point is that we, we will not be dealing with item. I believe it's item four on the agenda, which is approving a resolution on thirty-four Campbell Avenue. And that's because we received a communication today that may be relevant to the decision. So we'll be postponing the finalization of that resolution for now. So the, the first item on the agenda is seventeen Parsonage. When this is a workshop, so. We're not considering the merits of the application. We will just review the materials that have been submitted. And talk with the applicant about. How complete, whether they're complete, whether anything additional needs to be provided. And then possibly schedule a public hearing. So. Mark and Marissa, you are the applicants, correct?
Yes.
Hi, thanks for coming. So you want to just give a brief. A description of the project and why you are undertaking it?
Sure. Basically, we want to add the square footage, living square footage to our small house. And we would. Like to do so in the front, just bump in the front out. Yeah, that's pretty, pretty much. The project foundation and structure and per the plan proposed.
One thing that it occurred to me that would be helpful for the public hearing is if you could provide us with some photographs, just a few snapshots showing, because the crux of this project is the street scape. The, the appearance of this addition, the, the difference it will make on the, to the street scape. So if you could give us photographs of the current. From across the street, from the north and from the south, looking at your house and encompassing the other houses on that side of the street. That would, then that would give us something to refer to during the discussion when we consider the effect that your project will have on the streetscape. Now, a nice drawing, a, a nice drawing in your plans that gives a sense of, of the, of the project to, on your particular house. But it would be nice to, to have a better sense of the context.
Sure.
Okay.
Yep, that's not a problem.
Yeah, sure.
If you could send those to the village clerk ahead of time. And then he'll post them on the website along with your other materials so that the public can also have them available.
Okay, sure.
John, welcome aboard.
Are you? I had, I had a problem finding the zoom.
It's always the same, it's always the same link.
No, I'm not blaming you. I personally couldn't find it. I had a million emails coming in today. I couldn't track it down. I ran it through by your name and it wasn't coming up. Normally it comes up immediately that way, so. Yeah, with the, the application, just as you mentioned. You know, normally we would have photographs, you know, like the overhead, you know, how that the addition would. You know, how it'd be impactful looking down from above, you know, to get an idea as well as. From the street looking forward, including on the side street, you know, looking up from the side comparatively to the other homes on the block. Is what we've looked for.
When you say from above, you mean just a satellite like Google or? Okay.
Just to get it, it gives another way of having a scope of the project.
Yeah, makes sense.
Eric, briefly fill me in on some of the conversation if you would, just for two seconds.
There wasn't any, we, I just, the only substantive thing was I remarked that there were two changes to the agenda. Number one, the interview of the candidate will be conducted by executive session. Which was, did not, that did not appear on the agenda. And number two, we will not be considering the. The item four, which is finalizing the resolution on thirty-four Kemble. Because of a communication we received today that we need to take into account first.
Thank you.
Other than that, nothing, nothing really happened, so.
Yeah, so with regards to, you know, this application and front yard setback, those are the things we typically look for. As far as, you know, helping us, you know, look at the scope of the project. The mass content, the proposed mass content and, you know, how close it will be to the street, how. It compares to the low, the houses nearby on a computer, community impact basis, you know, are they relatively going to be of equal distance from the, their front property lines? You know, generally those are the questions we ask, I, that I've known from my experience on this.
And one item you should be prepared to talk about at the public hearing is. A ZBA has to consider whether the applicant could achieve the desired benefit by any other feasible means. So you have to be prepared to, to demonstrate to us that you're, you cannot achieve your goal. Which is more living space by any other feasible means that does not require a variance.
So what it does is that basically looks for hypotheticals saying, well, we want this kind of additional space on our house. Could we accomplish this in any other manner that would look, that would allow for a less aggressive or sizable variance, in essence, so. It, it's just to show that you've looked at the. The issue several different ways and you're trying to come up with the most appropriate plan. That would look, that would achieve the same goal of having more space but require not so great of a variance.
Okay.
One other issue is the list of neighbors. You, you will be sending notifications to neighbors about the public hearing. And you have a, you have a list in your application, which is quite. It covers all the adjoining properties and the properties immediately across the street. That's good. I took a walk down the street today and. I, I think that you ought to add a few more addresses. This, this particular project will be quite prominent on the street. And it will be very visible to everybody on the other side of the street, in the entire block, from their front door. It will be unmistakably a change to their, to their views of the street, so it's, it's important that they all be, they all have the, the knowledge that this proposal is taking place, so. I think you should add all the addresses from number ten Parsonage down to number twenty-eight. So that's basically everybody across the street from you, starting at the top of the hill and then going down to the intersection. I believe it's, so that means ten, twelve. Sixteen, eighteen, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-six and twenty-eight. Some of those are already on your list.
Erica, another, you know, quick point. Is that this addition will sort of displace natural ground of sorts, right, for water absorption? And since we have an environmental impact question to ask about as part of the criteria. Maybe demonstration of how. You know, water runoff is going to be accomplished without affecting next door neighbors. I, I just so happen to have a a court case on that right now.
Okay.
Where paved over, completely paved it over what they called a jungle, but it was natural ground. And then the next door neighbor was having a lot of water runoff invasion into their basement for the first time.
Well, basically just a downspout with an extension would suffice probably on the specification.
Right, right. And show, you know, where, you know, be able to explain where the water is going to be diverted to.
Okay.
And I don't think it's anything, I'm not actually, I'm looking at the designs that are, have been submitted and I don't know that it's a entirely new design by any means. I think it's just to be able to, to show with the setback and the other measurements that you already submitted.
Okay.
Unless anybody else agrees, disagrees.
Well, with regards to the water runoff, Keith?
Yes.
Yeah, no, as long as they can show where that water is being diverted, because you know, before this addition goes in place, there's gonna, there's natural ground there now, correct? That would be absorbing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and so we just have to know where that water is being deflected to. I live on a sloping property and I'm on the higher portion of it. And I could simply send the water down to my neighbor's yard. And it would all pool down there, but I have to, I, I had to figure out a way to put in a well to divert, to keep that water from running off down there, you know, from what was an addition off the back of my house to prevent it from then just going. It normally would have been absorbed by natural ground, but now it was just going to be funneled into one portion out of downspouts and going in one direction. So that's, that's what part of the question asked for. And so we need to be advised how the water is going to be captured and where it's going to be diverted to.
So just to clarify again, like just following up on what you're asking. Basically, a gutter system with a downspout and diver to the north side on the grass, because there's going to be some grass existing there, plus after that is a sidewalk, so. And it's on a slope, so from the north side to the south side, it's the only direction of the water gravity wise. So would it be, would that suffice? To just point and specify on the drawing, a downspout on the north side and with the extension on the ground and the drain system?
Yeah, just to let you know, I'm thinking that, see what happens when it rains and it comes down really hard. And, you know, if it starts flying out of the, the downspout real fast. It's going to go in one direction. But if you have like a little capture well down underneath that usually has like French drain holes in it. It'll tend to fill up real fast, but then it'll just release into the ground slowly rather than running off the top of the surface.
Yeah, okay.
So that, that's really one of the issues. It's, it's erosion. And, but it's also making sure that your neighbor doesn't have to experience that quick runoff. So, because normally if, before the ground is opened up to put in a new addition. The whole expansive area would just absorb everything down. And it would just take in one, you know, I mean, in a big spot, space and sort of absorb it easily, but when you take all that space and then concentrate it down, a single downspout, it becomes more problematic as to where it's going.
Well, that's all that I had to say about the application for now. Did the other board members have anything more to suggest?
No. Nope.
Okay. If, would you, Mark and Marissa, would you be available for a public hearing two weeks from today, the fifteenth?
Yes, what time?
Seven thirty.
Same time? Yep, that works.
Yep.
All right. Well, I'll make a motion then that we hold a public hearing on this application. On April fifteenth at the regular meeting at seven thirty.
I'll second it. All right, he seconded it.
All right, he seconded it, so all in favor?
Aye.
All right, it passes unanimously, so Mark and Marissa, I will, tomorrow I will send you the text of the public announcement. The, in other words, the, the statement that you will use, that you will put in, that you will mail to your neighbors.
Okay.
That, that, so you simply make copies of that and that's what you mail to them.
Okay.
That will tell them, inform them about the hearing. And that has to go out by Monday, this coming Monday. It has to be sent in the mail by then, so you'll, you'll, you'll need to get stamped mailing receipts and no later than Monday.
Okay.
And, and then in addition, you'll have to get a sign to post in front of the property from the village clerk. And that there's instructions about that in the application packet. And that has to be posted by Monday as well.
Okay.
As far as the pictures and the satellite image and everything, we can bring that at the meeting or you want that?
It'd be best to have, to have them sooner, doesn't have to be by Monday. But within, as soon as you reasonably conveniently can, so that the clerk has time to post them and the public can review them before the hearing.
Okay.
And Eric, if I can mention one other thing real quick, the reason why I mentioned particularly the runoff in this case is because they're not, their lot is so narrow.
Yes.
If they were sitting on an acre of land and the house is towards the middle. It'd be, it'd be sort of less concerning, particularly if they were on a level plane with their neighbors and they weren't necessarily on a high ground. If they were on a low ground, the water would sit right in their own place.
Definitely, yeah.
So, you know, every, every property and its size and boundaries are different, and this one becomes more of a compelling reason. Because of its narrowness and the tendency to potentially affect next door neighbors, that's the point.
All right, so that, that concludes the first workshop. Thank you, Mark and Marissa.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Let's move on to the next, the next item, which is also a workshop, seventeen Marion Avenue. And Trevor Knight is the owner and the applicant. And he, he's here tonight. Hello, Trevor.
Hi, how's it going? Thank you, guys.
You're welcome. So as you heard from the other workshop, we're going to just review your application. Make sure it's in a complete and ready to go. And, and then consider scheduling a public hearing.
Sounds good.
Want to just tell us, just briefly, the, the nature of, of your request?
Yeah, sure, so. There is a driveway down the side of the house and a, a sort of a parking pad. But no, no garage or any sort of covered, covered parking or anything like that. So the. The main element of this. You know, project and, and the reason for coming to the ZBA is a garage, two car garage, you know, tucked back behind the property. You know, as a place to park and also to have a small workshop. Yeah, I'll add that part of the project is, as well is. The property is kind of a blank, blank slate as far as landscaping, and so part of it is adding some complimentary landscaping and tying it into the garage and everything.
The referral from the building inspector mentioned hot tub and moving a fence and so on, but am I, I, I believe from my reading of, of this, the only, the only matter relevant to the ZBA is the placement of the garage.
I believe so, yeah.
Right, because the garage, as you proposed it, the garage extends a little ways into the side yard.
Yes, that's right. It's a little bit less than the ten, ten foot side setback, right?
Okay. I think that's, that's clear in the application. There's pretty clear drawings showing, showing that, that issue. It's going to have a vegetated roof, I see. That's interesting.
Interesting in what sense?
Well, it's, it's not common around here. There's not, not too many of those.
Yeah.
Greenscaping. Should also reduce the heat coming into the house, right? I mean, as far as in the summertime, it'll cool it down a little bit more.
Yeah, so the, the garage will be detached from the house, so it's. So it's not connected to the house, but yeah, it'll definitely keep the garage certainly cooler than.
I wanted to pipe in, my name is Ethan Timm, I was the architect working with Trevor. And just a couple of things, just because you were speaking about drainage issues on the previous workshop. To, the two main. Issues are to reduce by coming into the setback, it would reduce overall paving based upon the configuration of the shared driveway and potentially the grading, which is not as clearly shown. Ameliorate some of the existing drainage issues on the shared driveway. And then the vegetated roof is intended to be, first of all, to address some of the environmental concerns. And also sightline concerns, maybe to be a little bit like a to disappear a bit from above. Just to clarify a couple of things.
All right, thank you. That brings up something that I also mentioned in the previous workshop, which is. You should be prepared to demonstrate at the public hearing that you have no other feasible means of achieving your goal. And if your goal is to have a garage with a workshop. So you, you'll have to, you'll have to demonstrate to us that the garage could not be placed more centrally within the set, outside of the setbacks. And that's, you, I know you've mentioned about minimizing paving and, and keeping drainage, improving drainage or keep, keep preventing drainage problems. I think you should. To the extent possible, give us a little more data or a little more graphic demonstration of what you mean. This, this lot is a little unusual for us. Usually, this, this lot is fully compliant with the code as it is now. Because it, the, the development postdated the implementation of the code. Most of the properties we deal with are pre-existing non-conforming tiny, tiny lots. Where houses are crammed up against the property lines and so on, so there's already non-conformance there and the owners are just trying to work with that. And they're at a, they're kind of, you know, stymied by the, being shoehorned into this tiny lot, so. But this, this property is different. It's, it's a full, it's a standard full-size lot with a lot of room compared to many of the lots in the village, so. You're going to have to show us why you need a variance. Given that, given those advantages and the, the absence of any non-conformity at, at the moment. You know, so show us why, what would be the, the drainage issues if you moved the garage out of the side yard? You know, how would that make, precisely would that make things worse? Now, as for the neighbors, you'll be sending notices to your neighbors and you have a list. The list looks good to me. I, I thought you've, you've covered everybody who is adjoining and across the street, everybody who would be affected by this project, so I think. If you stick to that list, you'll, you'll cover everybody.
Okay, sounds good.
And the paved driveway, that's a shared driveway, that is. That's already in existence, right? I mean, it's already paved over.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there is already a shared driveway that sort of terminates in a T.
Right, so nothing's changing with regards to making a bigger driveway, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Like with the last application, photos would be helpful. And, and sort of photos of, of where. You know, where the garage would be and, and sort of how it relates to the neighbors, that'd be helpful.
Thanks.
Absolutely right, Laura. Like, you know, the neighbors, I know it, it appears as though the, your neighbor to the, further to the south is just a little bit further away on a cul-de-sac of sorts. But just take sort of backyard pictures looking around as well, you know, including and from the street looking in to the property. As well as from your backyard to see what other neigh, your neighbors will look like, what your neighbors would see as well. And as well as what your neighbors may have, have behind their houses. But all this just gives us a better perspective of what everything's going to look like and. You know, just so we have a good scope of the plans. That plan show a lot already. And, and photos would just simply help a bit.
Okay, sounds good. These, these photos that you're asking for, should I do it, give them to Jeff? Or like, should I send it to Jeff, is that?
Yeah, please send them to the village clerk. He'll put them on the website as part of your other application material, materials. And we can, we can see, retrieve them from there as well.
Okay.
Just out of curiosity and looking at some of the drawings here already, there are fences in place already?
Yeah, there, there is. Yeah, the, the backyard is fenced already, yeah.
Yeah, and. I mean, I, I, I'm not sure, I don't think this is necessarily on it, but it, the, the fences are just around four feet, right, or thereabouts, sir?
It's four, it's a four feet.
The only reason why I ask is because of the proximity, it looks like it'll be near the the property line. I mean, the fences currently exist in that area, I think, from what I can see.
Yeah, the, the fence in that area largely follows the property line, but it does sort of zigzag around or loop around the, where the parking pad is.
Very good, thank you.
Would you be available to have a public hearing on the fifteenth, two weeks from today?
Yes, that would work for me. Yeah, sounds good.
All right.
And one last thing, if I could ask, the, the purpose of the garage, again, it's a two car garage. And from what I can see, it's going to be a flat roof for the vegetation per se. It's only one story.
That's, that's right. That's, that's right. Um, in, in thinking about how we want to do this, wanted to sort of make it inattrousive and you know, lower, it does have a slight slope from the back. But, uh, there's only, yes, there's only one story to it.
And just out of curiosity, since we're looking at mass, it seems like we're talking a little bit about mass here a little bit. Uh, I, I didn't look, but the percentage of improvements, uh, you know, even with the proposed garage in the house, uh, is probably way under the thirty percent, I would imagine.
Um, yeah, it's in the application, I think it.
It should be.
It's about fifteen, I think it's fifteen percent.
Yeah, yeah, it's way under it. I'm just pointing that out to the board.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Well, I don't have any further questions, Eric.
Uh, anyone else? Any other board members?
Hmm, at this time.
Then I'll, I'll make a motion that we hold a hearing on this application on April fifteenth at seven thirty.
I second. Oh, that's Laura, since she seconds.
All right, Laura, seconded it. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. So, um, as I said to the other applicants, um, tomorrow, uh, Trevor, I will send you the announcement, the, the notice that you can use to send to your neighbors.
Good.
The, those have to go out by Monday. You, you'll need postmarked, um, receipts, mailing receipts by Monday. And you need to post a sign in front of the property by Monday as well.
Good.
Eric, if you don't mind me asking or mentioning this, I think the fact that they put the cold spring map here and they put an arrow that points right to where the property is. You know, while we may all know, it, it gives us a good, it gives me a lot easier way of seeing and I know right away which property is. I think in workshops in the future, it would be nice to almost ask people to do that.
Yeah, that's how, that was helpful. Okay, so that concludes this workshop. Um, thank you, Trevor and Ethan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, our next item is the, um, um, to interview, uh, an applicant for the, oh, they can see it on the board. Um, so I, um, I'll make a motion that we enter executive session now. Um,
Can, can't interrupt for a second? Beth Sigler and Karen Kapoor both have joined. I don't think Karen is the applicant for thirty-four. Kembo was on when you made the announcement earlier about this coming off the agenda.
Um.
Um, with all due respect, could I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead, Beth.
Um, can you share this correspondence with us? Um, my understanding, we have a public hearing which was closed. I noticed on the website that it's no longer a current application. None of the information is up. So is this, um, something that you will be sharing with us?
Um, I'll, I'll let you know, I, we just got this, this afternoon, so I don't, I don't know what to think about it. So I, I have no information for you at this moment, but, um, we'll, um, let you know as soon as possible.
Um, that would be appreciated. Um, and so um, you, if you are intending to reopen the public hearing, we'll be notified about that as well.
Of course, yes.
Okay, um, well, I thank you and, um, please do keep us informed.
Will, will do.
Okay, thank you very much.
Right, um, so Jeff, yeah, that, Beth was the, is the, um, attorney, is the, sorry, the, um, architect for Karen Kapoor, so um, th- they know about the, um, about the, the change to the agenda.
Yeah.
Um, so as I was saying, um, I'll make a motion that we enter executive session now for the purpose of, um, examining the, um, uh, uh, for, um, considering a, an appointment position to this board. I need someone to second the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, so, um, Jeff, I gather that means you turn off recording now?
Aye.
Okay.
There, there we go.
Um, we have finished our executive session. We're returning to the open meeting. And, um, one item remains on the agenda, and that is to review the minutes of the March eighteenth meeting. Um, I'll give the board members a couple of minutes to refresh their acquaintance with the minutes, with the draft minutes. I don't see too many changes that I would suggest. Um, there is a typo at the begin, near the beginning, under public hearing. It says workshop, public hearing. So the workshop is a typo. The word workshop should be deleted there.
Hmm.
And then, um, in the first bulleted list, it, it refers, the text refers to a school registered by the OFCS. But, um, it, the full, the full sentence is applicant seeks to convert an event space into a school registered by the OFCS, registered should be licensed. And we should spell out OFCS. Office of Family and Children's Services.
Uh, Eric, can I ask you in that second bullet point right beneath that one?
Yeah.
That the applicant is in the process completing a voluntary registration with the, uh, New York State Department of Education. Uh, it, that's, it's really not voluntary with regards to our code provision, right? I mean, the code requires.
Um, well, um, it, it's true. It's true that, um, she, she will not comply with the, with the zoning code unless she completes this registration. Um, but it is a voluntary registration from the point of view of state, um, s- state, um, governance. Um, so, um, I mean, at this point in the minutes, um, the board has not reached any decision. This is merely the, um, the applicant stating the facts of the, of the case.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
There won't be any, I believe there won't be any misunderstanding at this stage.
Because in the third, in that, also in that second bullet point where it says, uh, complete and accepted. Uh, and you read a definition. I know this is, uh, Beth Sigler's, uh, words, uh, but if we put in approved, because that would match, uh, really what the, uh, you know, the, the state's, uh, education, state of education department's requirement that it be approved. You remember that language?
Yes, yeah, the word approved is in there, uh, in the law or in the r- regulation. So, um, would you, do you think it should read complete and approved?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I, that, that way it makes it easier for us to know that she made the argument. And that matches really what we're supposed to seek, uh, as far as the code says. Uh, it, it has to be, how, how is the ter- terminology used in the code? Sort of like approved by the, uh, New York State uh, Department of Education, right? Isn't that accurate?
Yes, that makes sense.
I didn't see anything else in here myself going down.
The only other thing I would do on page two in, under board comment, bulleted list, the third item. I would delete that whole item, um, because that is, um, essentially the board's final decision. That was the final. Um, whereas this bulleted list is just supposed to be the discussion.
That's correct.
Good point, yeah.
So all we did, as you said, we just gave an interpretation, that's all, of what it meant.
Yeah.
We didn't, we did not reach the merits.
At, um, at the top of page two, there's a sentence, that being the case, the issues raised by Ms. Morrison are not relevant to the board's considerations matter. Um, that's true, but it doesn't, I wonder if a little bit more context would be helpful to say something like, like that in an interpretation, um, about the balancing factors aren't, aren't considered. Or, you know, you, you made that explanation, Eric, and it's kind of missing here. And so it sounds like we're just sort of throwing it.
Yeah.
Throwing her comments out.
That's right, Laura, absolutely.
Yes, I agree. Um, so, um, uh, something like, uh, in an interpretation, um, the Z B A, um, um, does not.
It's not going to consider the merits of the application at this time.
Or, or that it doesn't warrant that we should consider the merits at this time versus but what you're saying makes total sense to me, John, but I'm wondering if it, if it shouldn't read in such an absolute.
How about in an interpretation, public support or opposition are not, um, um, are, are not a factor in the board's decision-making?
On the interpretation of the code?
Yeah.
Yeah, like, okay. So, uh, public support, um, and opposition are not uh, factors in, um, a Z B A's decision-making. On a, um,
On an interpretation of this code provision, and you can reference specifically to the code provision.
Well, on, on any, on any.
Any code.
Really?
On, on an interpretation, on, on an interpretation, on, on a question of interpretation.
Perfect. Good point, Laura, thank you. Yeah, and in fact, everything we just said is in fact exactly what was discussed. Uh, this was sort of an abbreviated uh, statement in here that sort of sounded out of context, as Laura mentioned.
Yeah, that was a good point.
So in the theme of out of context and, and kind of it, it made me think of this when I was reading the Ms. Morrison are not relevant words, going back to her points, property delect- directly adjacent, her discomfort with it. You know, is it important to make sure that we capture, for example, I remember her saying something to the effect of um, the distance from where the V F W house currently sits to the West Point Foundry. And I've, if I'm, I might be incorrect with the way I heard it, but I thought that it was referenced, that it was like two and a half mile different distance when in actuality it's, it's probably a quarter. And I'm not bringing that up from the sense of what was accurately shared, because, you know, obviously value of property is certainly up for interpretation. But in this case, is it important to note anything else that might have been shared that isn't whether accurate or not underneath the public comments from Stacy?
That would go a little bit towards the merit, as I think we talked about. I think, uh, we were just trying, we were trying to really, I mean, of course, the minutes talk about who said this and who said that, there's no doubt that, that's the way minutes fall out here, you know, it. But when it comes to really what we are doing was saying, what is this code provision telling us, uh?
Yeah.
And what does it mean? Uh, so I, I get your point, he, Heath, unless I'm missing it, uh, first of all, it is.
You, you've already answered my question. I think I would, y- you could tell I was kind of directed at you anyway, based on the context and forward thinking. Um, I, so I'm comfortable that there's nothing else that we should add as far as the public comment. I was just kind of curious, you know, um.
Well, there was, there was a lot said that, that's not in here, uh, because I think, uh, Eric at certain points in time, incorrectly so, I believe, tried to circumscribe our open discussion on the matter. And, and it, you know, some of the contentious points that were brought up, it wasn't really the, uh, that wasn't the meeting for that at that time, the merits of a school there at this point.
That makes sense. I'm, I'm comfortable with it.
And, and you know, just to let you know, um, you know, I did look back on this and this is just my own research, but I went back through a lot of case law and everything. Uh, and I think I've already sent out an email about it, but just in the context of things, uh, schools are favorable. They're generally on a public policy basis deemed to be favorable. And, and I'm not trying to discuss the merits or anything, I'm just talking about what case law says. Because we haven't, we haven't looked at any of the facts, but the point I'm getting is I, the way the code is drafted, and we've already made an interpretation of it, so I'm going right to the code. The code and case law is favorable to schools being in a town. All right, in general, and we, we could talk more about that later, but the point I'm, yeah, that's, I'm reinforcing the fact that we made, I believe, a correct interpretation of the code. Uh, yeah, unless things are really extreme, it, it, it has to be a, a high threshold of showing, um, adverse, adverse, uh, ba- uh, bases, uh, because culturally and everything, i- if you look around, there are schools throughout residential areas. And, 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 and there's a reason for that. And, you know, if you go into case laws or you, you can go on the internet and you can look up, you know, schools and residential areas, and you're going to find cases that discuss it or people talking about it. And it'll give you a context. So, you know, every, every fact pattern is different, and I won't go any further, but the point is, uh, you know, there was a little concern of whether or not we were interpreting this correctly. And this is, this is a sort of a uniform public policy, you know, in virtually any municipality or anything of schools and residential areas. You know, favorable, because they bring positive aspects. That's it.
That, that's a good point, be it, as a general point, because it helps us understand why our code uh, specifically allows schools in R one. Um, of, of all possible uses, why it, it, it singles out schools.
And, and I can take that further. And the other thing is, Eric, we, we, this village has adopted codes by looking at codes broadly throughout municipalities and around areas. And it decided what is most beneficial for us. So this is something you see in a, in a, in a lot of municipal codes with regards to schools in residential areas permitted. Now, there, there are variants, I mean, that there are, I should say, uh, there, there are, there are always factors to consider, you know, they, that at times you'll see cases, you know, they talk about how much space the school has, what kind of size of the property or anything. But it, the threshold of showing how the But the threshold of showing how the school is an adverse. Prospect for that particular residential area is a very high threshold, but. Rather than decide the issue, we got to look at all factors, decide each case on its own merits. But if you ever wanted any guidance, you just go on the internet and look up. Schools. In residential areas and you'll see that kind of, you'll see what the, and put, put policy, public policy. And this way you don't just have to hear it from me.
Well, thank you. I was gonna say, I don't see anything else in the minutes to adjust.
Laura, are you okay with everything else?
Yes.
I think I put her to sleep. Sorry, Laura.
Will, will someone move that we accept the minutes then, as amended?
I moved that we accept them as amended.
I'll second it. Laura seconded.
Favor?
Aye.
Sometimes I jump in there and I, I second motions or whatever, just to move it along, because I know I'd already talked too much and I just want to. Let everybody go home with their people tonight.
The board members have any other, any other business?
No.
No, thank, thank you, Eric, again, for everything you do. And thank you, Jeff, for being on board.
Yep, thanks, Jeff, for, for taking over.
It's temporary. That's what I keep telling myself.
Hey, hey, Jeff, for, for your help, I'll, I'll give you past performances for the Keeneland Bluegrass Stakes on Saturday.
There we go.
I move that we close the meeting.
I'm gonna let John second it.
No, no, that's he, he just said it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Eric.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Good night.
Good night.